I think we're working now.
I do have a good joke, but.
But we'll save it for later.
Okay.
All right, we're working, Nick?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Lindsay, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kathy?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Callow?
Here.
Mr. Key?
Here.
Mr. Pollak?
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda is MBARA. We have representative, we do.
Yes, you do. Do you mind if I come up here?
Please do.
Okay, okay.
Please do.
My name is Julie Kraus. I am the membership director for the Mexico Beach Artificial Reef Association. I live a few doors down from the mayor. And we've got a check to give today. I don't know if all of y'all know, but Mexico Beach has the largest artificial reef system in the whole Gulf Coast, right off our shores. So it's a big deal. It feeds fishing, it feeds diving, and it supports our local economy. So it's a great thing. We're completely run by volunteers. And so after Michael, when people wanted to donate money to the city, it was much easier to run those checks through our nonprofit and then present those to the city because we're a 501(c)(3). So I have a check to give to you today. You like getting money, don't you?
Oh, yeah. I stand up for money.
Do you? All right. So we have $25,000 to give today. And one, a lot of this money came from a lady named Betty Jane Grant out of Tallahassee. Don't know if anybody knows her, but she helped quite a bit. So $25,000. And it comes with really nice cards from people all over this region, just thinking about us and wanting to try to help our city and what we're trying to do to recover. So can I get a photo?
Please. Oh, I like photos, too.
All right. There you go. Put that down and get a good photo.
All right.
One more time.
All right.
Okay, and I do have one question, if you don't mind if I ask more. So if you ever go to Greaton Beach and you're walking down the boardwalk, you'll see some really nice, all-weather signs that talk about the water system and the fishing and whatnot off Greaton Beach. And Bar is thinking about it. Be pretty cool if on our walkways, we had maybe one sign that kind of talked about the artificial reefs out here, how big they are, how they feed fishing, kind of educate the public because so many people don't know what's under the water out there. And we thought we'd fund the whole thing. We thought about starting with maybe four boardwalks and seeing what the public reaction was. But I just wanted to see if you felt like that was an idea worth pursuing, how you all felt about that. And if so, we can get some numbers and come back to the board.
Sounds good to me.
Does it?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
I agree.
Are you okay with that, Mayor?
We're good.
All right, very good. Thank you, guys.
We're good, thank you. Give me a hand. On your way. I just get to look at it. You see that nice lady standing there behind Nick? Just pass that.
That nice lady?
Yeah.
Pretty one, right?
The pretty one right there. She. But everybody might want to, everybody want to look at?
Can I handle it for you?
But that is, that's awesome. That's a, that's just folks around here.
All right.
Yes.
To use that and thank you.
You're welcome.
And MBARA, you have to put up with Ron.
I do deal with Ron Charles, yeah.
Oh, bless you.
It's a privilege.
We should pray now.
And Mayor, also, they just finished setting down $92,000 worth of reefs just three weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
And then they took some of the money that the Saint Joe Company had originally proposed for one thing that fell through, and they've, they're actually taking that money and dropping some additional artificial reefs in the next couple of.
July.
In July. So again, it's incredible what they're doing. This is money that's coming into us, but it's incredible the efforts that they're doing with Fish and Wildlife and all the other organizations to bring even more activities for us.
You could try. Thank you, Mario.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For all of, all of MBARA's efforts. All right, moving on. Next is a agenda item, a resolution 2016 for a task order for helping clean up Salt Creek. Do I have a motion to read?
Make a motion, read resolution 2016.
Second.
By title only?
By title only.
Okay, Mario, do you think, do you need any, is it, is the reading of it going to be self-explanatory? Or do you need to expand any on that?
We're cleaning up Salt Creek with grant money and match money from the Saint Joe Company.
All right, we have a motion, second to read. Please do so. Mr. Madam Court.
A resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving an agreement with Kaiser Kane Storm LLC, Kaiser Kane Storm LLC joint venture in the amount of $2,461,755.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt? The key word there was grant money.
Yes.
And I see FUD from the Saint Joe Company, which is, obviously everyone knows, Salt Creek predominantly runs through their property, even though it connects our canal. So, but they were generous to help want to do that.
Make a motion, we adopt the resolution 2016.
So this is grant money that's coming to do this.
Did I stutter or did I say that?
Well, I'm just making sure.
I've got a few questions if I'd like to ask.
Good, well, that's, now's the time. Yes, it is grant money. Go ahead. Go ahead, Darrell.
I just wanted to know if it's grant money.
Yeah, and you know, and Kaiser Kane is my, my thing. And in this book, the package right here, we have that nobody could work for during the contract if they worked for the city. And were you, is Philip Hall still working for them?
Philip Hall not working for the city.
Absolutely. I know he don't work for them. And it's saying he couldn't work for the city and still get this Kaiser Kane can't get this contract.
What page are you on?
This is in here. I was just trying to find. I read it this morning and last night. And also.
I think that reference is current and bold.
I don't have the reason. It says employee for the city, working for Kaiser Kane.
Okay, I'm not, maybe with that language, but I can't imagine that someone that used to work for the city.
Can you help us where you're looking to look?
It's in here. I haven't read it twice.
Yeah, it's very long. I don't know.
Yeah, I read it. Well, I'm sorry. I read it in this one, too. I'm sorry. But this one should have the same as this one, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
Same contract?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what he did right here. If this should have the same contract, that's what I'm asking. It says that.
Where do you have it, Nick?
Uh, I don't know. About that, I have it like. It says, "I hereby set that no city of Mexico Beach city employee, employees, elected official or any other agents also owner, corporate officer, or employee of their corporation, partnership, and business." That was my concern. It's in this right here, but it should be in this contract also, shouldn't it, Nick?
Where is it? What are you looking at?
Go ahead.
I think that's the general contract that said it's stolen.
Okay.
That's not for cleaning it.
Yes, but shouldn't we have that same piece of paper here? See what I'm saying? I mean, if we got a contract on them, why shouldn't we have it? I mean, or do we have it in?
So this is, what we're looking at is labeled Oleander Avenue, portable water.
Yes, I know, but my question to you is, shouldn't, shouldn't that be in this contract here with Kaiser Kane?
What it's saying, though, it's what the mayor mentioned, it would be a current employee. Philip hasn't been with the city in, what, eight months at least?
I don't know what I read, but I'll take your word for it.
So this conflict of interest form, it's from, the engineers know more about this, help me out. But I think it's from the bidding package, we're proving a contract for that. So we're seeing information from the bidding package as part of their current contract. So there very well could have been a form like this a year and a half ago when we hired Kaiser Kane. The way it's written, that was.
All right, I've got one more thing.
Okay.
Will you give me a piece of paper back? And another reason I'm not crazy about Kaiser Kane is, I think we had him when we dredged the canal and they sort of backed, went out on us. And I know this is free money, and I know this is not what I free money, it's FEMA money, but I, I, I didn't like them when they left and then we had to get somebody to finish it. So that's my reason for not, and I don't know what we can do, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to clean up Salt Creek, but it's under the circumstances I don't like. That's just my opinion.
Okay. What else? Darrell, you got some questions or comments?
That's all I have.
Okay, anybody, any other comments? Well, I'm going to say, because it's been brought up, Kaiser Kane was here, answered the bell when the, when the storm left. The city would not be near the shape it's in debris-wise without them. We owed them $20 million for 18 months. They have a thing about the canal. There were other circumstances involved in that, but I don't think it's necessary to, I, I have certainly no issues whatsoever with their performance, none. Do I wish the canal had been handled differently? Absolutely. Absolutely.
We still owe them, Mario, prior to this, but we're getting close to getting them completely paid. Or if we got them.
We are, we are definitely getting closer. We just, we just received $7 million, and then that $7 million will get reimbursed and be able to pay them some more. So we're getting much closer. The, prior to the $7 million, we owed them 13. So we're, we're down to $5 to $6 million, change.
Okay. All right, refreshment. Do we have a motion to accept resolution, adopt?
I made one.
Did, Darrell, did I, am I wrong? Did you say that?
Uh, second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Callow?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Okay, next is resolution 20-17 for the municipal complex, which is a resolution to accept the design for not to exceed $20,000. Again, Mario, is the resolution in the context that we're going to read explanatory or are there?
Yes, sir. Basically, what they're doing is they're designing the municipal complex. It'll be directly behind Public Works. It will be a fire station, police station, city hall, and a civic center to replace the buildings that we've lost. This is strictly for programming and preliminary design. The overall design will come in afterwards. We've got to figure out the size and the placement and how they, how they all work, how many people, and all those things. So this $20,000 is to kick things off. It will allow us to start receiving FEMA funds, which is also the next trigger for receiving the land.
All right, we'll have a motion, read resolution 20-17. By title only.
I make a motion, we read resolution 2017 by, um. Title only, sorry.
Title only.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any opposition, read? Please do so, Madam Court.
A resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving a proposal for professional services for programming and concept designs with dead architects relating to the Mexico Beach Municipal Complex in the amount not to exceed $20,000.
Motion for adoption.
Make a motion, read adoption, resolution 20-17.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Callow?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to number three, which is resolution 20-18. This is simply of, again, they design engineering services not to exceed a proposed fee of $20,325 for the municipal complex. Anything to add, Mario, before we motion it?
The, the two biggest keys here is delineating the wetlands, which will allow us to know how much property we can truly improve, and then also the survey component. Once we get that survey component done, what we will bring back to the city is the agreement with the Saint Joe Company to donate the land. But until we get that survey, it's kind of awkward to make that next step.
Has the tower got anything to do with this?
Yes, sir. They have also included the tower in the donation as one of the permissible things to put on the property. So the, the donation is for police station, fire station, city hall, civic center, and the tower.
Now, this, we just did a whole bunch for due very last session, I think. Quite a bit of money going to them. And, and after we did it, I got to thinking about it. We, we, this is not like a contractor. We don't get extra bids for these kinds of services. What's?
What, what the city has done, and this is in the past, they do a master service agreement with architects, engineers, typically professionals, and then they do task orders for the additional work. Again, for licensed professionals, what cities tend to do is actual continuing contracts, and that continuing contract is typically good for anywhere from five to 10 years, and it has some automatic re-ups and things like that. I was not part of that, but as long as it's something that the city wants to continue to do, and it's typically done for, to say this is a smaller project, it's still a smaller project. What I may be bringing to you in the not-too-distant future is a request for proposal for a city pier. That's a $15 million project. That may be something that you want to go out on the street for, or we can just get a task order from Du Berry. Again, we have that master service agreement that allows us to do task order after task order after task order. It keeps us with the same knowledge base. They've got all of our records. They know how we function. They do all of our water. They do all of our sewer. For these buildings that are on, they're large for us, but on a relatively small scale, you tend to use the, the task order process to, to keep that going.
And that sounds really good. The only thing that that doesn't include is for us to know if they're being competitive. And, you know, we're spending a ton of money. And I'm just, there's nothing that we can check to see how competitive those bids are or anything. I mean, we're just giving them a carte blanche to, not, not that I have a problem. Listen, and we got Du Berry folks here. Hi, Dina. But.
Not Du Berry.
And Josh. Well, she's not Du Berry anymore. What are you doing?
Josh, yeah. She's got her mask on, number one.
But I'm just saying, they've done a great job, but it just seems kind of strange that we put everything out to bids, but we have an agreement with an engineering company. So, I mean, they could be very high. I mean, what is your thoughts on that?
Within, within most of the scope of what we do with the FEMA projects, we are checking to the FEMA grant equations, for lack of a better term, on what they're allowed to charge. So again, whatever funds they're, they're proposing to us for these services, we are also checking with our FEMA consultants to make sure that FEMA is willing to reimburse us for, for those dollar figures. But there are state numbers that give you percentages and things like that. Again, Josh can, can elaborate on those, but typically architects and engineers charge based on what the, the total construction cost is, and it's typically a percentage of that, and that's what we tend to check to. And then FEMA does the same thing. Based on that construction cost, what is the percentage that FEMA allows you to charge up to?
The rest of the story is, on those continuing contracts, the way we set ours up and the way state law is, if the construction cost on a project is going to be more than $2 million, so the buildings and the roads are going to be more than $2 million, you go redid your engineering services. But in this case, when we bid out the engineering services, we knew right away that we were going to have eight or 10 big projects because of the hurricanes. So we went ahead in that solicitation prospect. We included those projects, described them. So we have a handful of projects that, even though they might exceed the normal limit, we set ourselves up so that we could use Du Berry. You don't have to. If the board wants to go out for an RFQ on engineering for any of those projects, you can. And like Mario said, any, any very large projects that we can specifically try to include in that solicitation, we need to go out and get engineering on. It's just the state law is written with larva cities in the lines. They think a big project is three, four, five million dollars. And so that's a big project, like, might be like.
I, I don't agree with you. I know that's shocking to you, but I, I don't, I don't think we should wait to get us a million dollars or $2 million. I believe $20,000 to me is enough money for us to do something. And I know what you're saying, and I try to do it in my mind, but I, I really think competitiveness is, is the key to what I like. And I like, and I agree with Darrell on, I think we should get more than one bid. And I know what you're saying, that we just keep adding on to Du Berry and Du Berry and Du Berry, but we're, we're going to stop when we get to the $3 million projects.
You can do that, but you won't achieve very well at price reduction because when you do an RFQ for engineering, you're not allowed to ask for prices. You have to select the firm that you think is most qualified, and then you negotiate prices, which is what we did with Du Berry a year and a half, two years ago. So, I mean, most of their task orders are based on hourly rates that we approved maybe December of 2018. So again, you can always bid out engineering, but you can't say, "All the engineers in town, give us your best price. We'll take that one." Because whether it's good policy or not, that's state law. They tie their hands with that.
State law on professionals requires the most qualified engineer, not the lowest. And you can't, you're not supposed to ask.
And who makes that decision?
The most qualified.
We do.
Y'all do.
That's right, we do. We, we do.
Yes, sir.
This is not a, this is not a uncommon discussion. Several years ago, this came up in the count, and, and there was the attorney, the engineer, the accountant, the, you know, the group that's sitting in these chairs wanted to know about the price. And then when it, when we, or when they were advised, it's just done, you pick the most qualified. You don't pick, you don't look at a price. The council, in the end, said, well, you know, the services that we're getting were very well satisfied. So if, if, but we can certainly do an RFQ for professional services on any that we have. But if you want, again, that all you're going to get is reputable engineering companies that are in the area. So if you're looking at just the $20,000, if you're looking at a dollar number, you're not going to bid, you, you don't bid out that project. You're not going, you're, we're going to spend a lot of time going through that process. And so I think to me, if we, if we just want to look at bidding out an RFQ for engineering services, that's something we can decide if you want to do that. And then we can get an RFQ and sit down and look at the five companies or whatever, whoever submits it. But we better be careful. We're in, we're, we're in the middle of FEMA recovery. We, we, we got, we better be careful with what, whatever the thought process is for why you want to, might want to do this, because you lose a lot of continuity. Awful lot of continuity. And I'm just, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. That, you, you, there's, there's a backside to that that you, we need to be careful with.
I, I can appreciate that. I understand that, and that's a very valid point. Josh, so when you guys, you guys have kind of a basic formula that all engineers follow? I mean, I don't, I don't understand that part of.
I think that he's speaking more to these FEMA projects. FEMA has a feature that we use to price off of, and then that is verified through FEMA consultant, that I'm providing pricing that is in line with, with what FEMA will reimburse. So I can't submit a price to the city where my fees are going to be out of line with what FEMA is going to reimburse. I'm held accountable for that. If it's a water or sewer job, then USDA has the same type of features. They only allow so much percentage based on the total construction amount of a job, and I'm held accountable for that. Now, if it's a private development job, then that's a different thing. That's kind of based on what I feel like it is. But for most municipal jobs, there's that feature that coincides with what type of job that is. So I'm not just making up the, I'm actually charging against what the construction amount is based on that feature.
Well, FEMA is, FEMA is us, too. It's just federal us. And I'm just trying to be responsible for money. That's right. That's the reason I, I'm asking all the, what I asked today, because I thought I should have asked it last week, but it, I didn't. And so now I'm aware. So really, there's, there's really, as long as FEMA is giving you the guidelines, you guys don't say, "Well, that's too much, and we could have done it for this."
Well, there's checks and balances against me within the city with FEMA. So there, Mario's checking against what I'm submitting to you guys to make sure I'm not out of line. I'm held accountable for what I charged.
Okay. All right, well, that was just, that answers my questions. And, and I agree with, with you, Mayor, that, that we're in the middle stream, and this is not a good time to be rocking the boat unless we got a real significant reason to rock the boat. So, but that did answer my questions, and I just wanted to know that because I didn't want to keep signing off on all of these millions of dollars without at least asking that because I've been a businessman all my life, and I always want to know that I'm getting a fair price. I have my favorite subs, but I check them every once in a while to make sure they're still in line.
Okay. Other questions or comments concerning resolution 20-18, which is real? Is there a motion to read?
Make a motion, read resolution 20-18.
By title only.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Please read.
A resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving a proposal for professional services for programming and site design with Du Berry Engineering relating to the Mexico Beach Municipal Complex in the amount of $20,325.
Thank you. Motion for adoption?
Make a motion, read adoption, resolution 20-18.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Callow?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
All right, number four, I understand, has been tabled till a later time, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Correct. Next is resolution 20-20, which is portable water main with no part of construction. Can we, can we, is this as simple as that's to replace the water line that's running down the middle of Oleander?
Yes, sir. And these are grant FEMA funds.
These are FEMA funds? They're going to, they're going to pay a portion of that?
A portion is FEMA, a portion is impact fees and.
Okay.
So basically, we have funds.
All right, just for everybody's knowledge, that's Oleander's, the little one-way road, one road off of 98 that is in terrible condition. We can't do any repairs to it to remove that water line.
And there's been lots of problems along that.
Oh, no, no, there's probably, you couldn't count the patches. Okay, uh.
I got a question if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So it says in the package that they're going to have asphalt. Did we have enough?
So it says in the packet that they're gonna have asphalt, did we have enough, we're supposed to pay Oleander? And then they have it in this packet that they're gonna pay what they did? They're gonna pay what they tore up, what they, how many millimeter feet and all of this? Asphalt, one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, so why would we wanna pay them if we're gonna asphalt? Or they're gonna just asphalt, we're gonna asphalt over?
So.
Those things that I see.
So is that resurfacing, what the one hundred and nineteen's resurfacing, so?
They're gonna dig up the road to put the new water line in, once they dig up the road, we will asphalt the whole road, and this, that map that I gave you the other day is all the roads that we will resurface, but this is one of those, which is part of this project, not part of the other project, so outright, Ms. Dina.
So we're gonna get asphalt, but we're not paying for it, except by the.
The asphalt is.
We're not doing it again.
We're not, we're not doing it.
Not twice, not twice.
Same people gonna do the asphalt?
Yes, sir.
I mean, what my question is, how we got it in this bid right here, one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, we gonna, if we gonna asphalt?
The drawing shows all of the roads that are being resurfaced, but this, I'm glad overall, this is being done under this contract. We're not resurfacing that road with that other contract, that road's being resurfaced under this contract.
And my question again, we're gonna pay North Florida to asphalt over the, what we did, and then we're gonna asphalt again, why don't we just see if they're coming down?
No, 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 let me start, let me, let me try to help you. We're gonna asphalt the road one time?
Yes.
Okay, it's gonna be done under this contract with North Florida Construction. It's not gonna be done under the FEMA contract that we approved or talked about. We had that map, I guess it was the last meeting?
Yes.
All right. It's gonna be done under this contract, it's not gonna be under that. It's taken out, so I don't understand the two, it's only asphalt one time, these things, under this contract. Paid for recognizably and is listed on the FEMA map, it's just not, it's broken out because of the construction of the water line. I'm a little confused, how, what were you saying, twice, I'm not sure.
Well, we, we last meeting, with the drawings of the Oleander paved and what we was gonna pay, Oleander was on it, right?
It's not on that list, it's on this list.
It was on, it was on the, it was on the drawing for, for information for the council to understand the full breadth of what we're gonna get resurfaced.
Well, we didn't, we didn't talk about specific contracts.
No, that was just showing what FEMA had outlined to say. All right.
Nick, you find it, I want you to look at, see if it wasn't on there. The last, yeah, on the.
Our last meeting was for the design, for Duber to design that.
Overall road layout.
Overall road.
And Oleander was on it.
But it was there more for information, because it's part of this project.
But it was part of what they're gonna show, that FEMA says that they have approved all of these sections of road, and it showed us that map.
I, I, I see what you're saying, I, and I probably, it's on there, what they was gonna prove. But why, and I, my question to you and council is, why don't we wanna pay for it twice? Why don't we get somebody?
We're not paying for it twice. FEMA's gonna pay for that, it's just under.
Maybe to help explain, that, that drawing that was done, I could've given you two completely separate drawings, one that just showed Oleander, and then one that showed all the other roads, so that this would be more clear, that this is being done with this project, and the others are with the other project. I just gave, we just gave you one drawing that shows all the roads that are being resurfaced.
I can try.
Watch it with me now, 'cause you ain't, you ain't sitting very good with me now.
What, what we did is all the roadways were included in that drawing, but in order to do the water line construction on Oleander, the roadway has to be taken care of as well. So we just included that FEMA portion as part of that Oleander job. So you can disregard Oleander.
In the drawing.
As part of the overall drawing, we just included that FEMA portion of the roadway in the Oleander design, so it all had to be done at one time.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to read Resolution twenty-dash-twenty? Make a motion to read Resolution twenty-dash-twenty by Tyler.
Second.
Have a motion second, please read.
A resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving agreement with North Florida Construction in the amount of six hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-two cents.
Motion for adoption? Make a motion to read Resolution twenty-dash-twenty.
Second.
Have a motion second, call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Number six, I ask that to be put on here very briefly. I think everyone here is very much aware that Leave No Trace is a part of our city in terms of the vote that was taken several years ago, and we have not addressed that. And before we are asked about it, I thought that we as a council should do nothing more than recognize that if we find there to be an issue down there, that we can start looking at it. I have not personally observed any issues on our beach. I'm not saying there hasn't been any with people leaving things, but I haven't seen it, I haven't heard about it, I've been asked about if we're gonna, what are, we're gonna ride the beaches. So I think we as a council at least need to acknowledge that Leave No Trace is, summer's here, there's more people here. If we want to put money and manpower and effort into doing that, we need to give, uh, I think that's one of those things that we need to tell the administrator that we want to enact. If we wanna just wait and see if we're, if we get to bid issue. Needless to say, I, I think, I think it's important that we discuss that on what our direction to the administrator is for Leave No Trace. And if y'all have had people ask about it, I may be the only one, but I know that it will come if we don't at least address it, so we can say we've talked about it, and here's the direction we wanna take.
I have a comment. Back when this was done, and this was done, what, a year or two prior to the storm?
Two years.
Two years. I was one of the ones in opposition to it, I'm still in opposition to it. But it's primarily because of two things. First of all, one of the citizens did a, kind of a cost analysis of what it was costing, 'cause we got the, the trash guys picking that up, is that correct, still? Tommy, is that?
Right now, we, right now, we have, we've not enforced it, and that's one of the questions that the mayor's asking.
Yeah.
If you want us to start enforcing.
But to answer that question, I, I kinda wanna know what it has cost us in years past, because it's my understanding that some of the people in Bay County, some of those beaches, enacted the same thing, and then quit enforcing it because the cost was so expensive. You know, I heard sixty to seventy thousand dollars that first year.
No one stopped doing it, it was done by referendum vote, you just don't, you just don't stop doing it.
Well, they quit enforcement.
Only Gulf County, Bay County, I can't honestly beach enforce this, and they do it every day.
So Gulf County doesn't enforce it, they have the same?
Correct, Gulf County does not by law enforce.
Well, so, so this brings me to my point, what is it costing us to do that, do we know?
Yeah, we looked at it additionally, and everybody, well, when we contracted it out, when it first started, we were trying to deal with it, we had, you know, we had a mess down there. So it was much more involved, we got better at it as time went on, because we had some people, skilled people, doing it on the beach instead of just knocking heads with our tourists and taking their stuff, which is, so, but we got better at it. And we simply took a pickup truck, I believe it was from six to seven, and they rode the beach, and if the items were down there unattended, they picked them up, stored them, let people come pick them up, they had a little space out here. And we went through the trials and tribulations that you would in acting any kind of new ordinance about the beach, and, but we, we, we got it, we got pretty good at it. So. Going down the beach this morning, I don't know exactly where it was at, but there was a frame with a part of a canvas flopping, that was left undoubtedly overnight or whatever. I'm not a big fan of it myself, but I think we need to keep our beach clean, and we need to address it a little bit. Well, that's why, that's why I put it on here, I, if, I think the administrator needs direction. When the phone rings and people ask about Leave No Trace, we need to be able to say what we're doing and what the council has decided. And it's not like we can, it's not doing it or not doing, we just simply have, I mean, I think, our plate's been, we've had other things on our mind, but now that the beach is open, I totally agree keeping the beach clean and nice, and we can, I'd say, we can simply say, "Look, we need to send somebody running down the beach," but if you don't do it early in the morning, then, you know, after seven o'clock, they can have their stuff down there. So I just hope we, if we enact that, we need to be careful with that, and, and, or if we're satisfied to say, "Look, if we see something, go down there and get it," like that, you know what I mean? Maybe just a visual look, and if it gets, if, if we see that it's starting to build up, then we'd have to do something, but I, and that's sort of a, not really a comparative answer, but. I'm throwing it out there to see how we as a group feel, if we can come to some consensus of, one, start enacting it every day, just like we have been, two, keep a good visual look on it and see what we see, and get our trash people or whoever's riding the beach, say, "Hey, here's what I'm seeing," report back. I, I, I don't know. If you got one or two somewhere, probably start having a bunch. Bunch, that's what I'm saying, one or two, I don't know that this, other than just going down there and picking them up. But to devote that money and that effort on a daily basis, which amounts to overtime, in some cases, as stressed as we are, I'm fine with just being, looking at our beach, seeing what we see, all of us traveled that area enough to know that, look down there, and just sort of treat it that way, but that, anybody else?
I ain't had no complaint, I mean, I, my, my crew ain't said nothing about no tents or, and I know we need to, we need to address, but I think we need, in my opinion, we just let it ride like it's riding it. If we got a complaint, then we'll make tell Mario, just deal with it.
And, and I'm fine with that.
Paying somebody to ride it down the beach to pick up sticks, I think we need to just wait till it gets to the problem, and use it, and we'll know July the fourth, I think July the fourth.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
We need to, we need to.
Is everybody good with that?
Just sort of, well, so, so that we, so they can leave their stuff down there, as long as.
No, we're only advocating that, no, no, we're not changing any rules, we're changing the way that.
We pick it up.
Pick it up.
The law's on the book, it's not that it's not enforceable, it's whether the city's gonna, how much money is the city gonna devote toward daily patrol?
Exactly.
Well, but you can only pick it up between seven PM and seven AM.
But I think it's asking the citizens of this to cooperate with us, that's basically what we're trying to say. Plus the signs that we have, I think, are important.
Well, that, that is my question, right, right now, the signs are not up, they were taken up, I guess, before the storm arrived, at some point in time, the signs were taken up. We have no signs right now. If the council wishes, we can put the signs back up that inform the public, and again, it's asking people not to leave stuff, it's not saying that we're gonna go over there and start enforcing, but again, if you don't ask the people not to leave stuff.
I think we should put them up, I think, for sure, those should go back up.
Perhaps, you guys are gonna do signs at the MBA RA, right? Could you put this as a no trace on the, we can't.
This is, this is different, he's already got these signs.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
All right, what do you think, Rocky, you had your hand up, go ahead.
Well, as a citizen, in my opinion, I walk the beach every day, I go down the sidewalk every day. And just yesterday, watching the sunset, we're down here walking around, I'm just like, so applaud, and all the damn footprints fall over the sand dunes. I brought this up before to you guys about, you got the signs.
What about Leave No Trace, you got anything on that?
They're saying, nobody has a clue, you're dedicated beach, nobody has a clue. They drive up there, there's no signs, there's nothing, so, the people leave stuff down there.
Well, there's plenty that don't walk on the sand dunes.
Well, I know that, and it's just annoying, because you see the footprints right there.
I know, that's gonna be brought up, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that in a minute.
But if the other thing, the signs, and like you were saying, if you have the signs, it would be nice, you got one hooked there, they wanna put stuff up like a great beach, which would be nice. It would be nice to have it displayed.
Yeah, put it up there.
Right there, so it, it, it looks nice, instead of having a million little signs everywhere, do something that looks nice.
I agree, what you got, Ms. Kimberly?
Just two things, one, you know, we're doing our part by helping inform our overnight lodging visitors, the city has these rules along with some other rules regarding pets, fire, glass, driving, those good things. Those magnets are up, we give them out to our partners. Another thing would just coordinate with the sea turtle people, 'cause they go on the beach at like five AM, and they would be the ones to tell you if they start seeing more and more debris. And if they see it, then maybe that's your cue to start, you know, getting a guy out there for seven AMs to, you know, calm the beach.
Okay, that should go down easy. I think just everybody's eyes on the beach, they're not, not that they aren't anyway, and report back, and if we start hearing or seeing things that are unsightly, put the signs back up is a good step, and see what we can come up with. Okay, we're good with that? All right, thank you. All right, we have some staff reports, Nick, you have anything?
Just briefly, last meeting, we had a discussion about code enforcement. If there are any questions, we can answer them, but I've gathered together Kathy, shared some information, and I think we'll plan on talking a little more after the meeting, and that's progressing fine. I've shared the recent updates and some, some guidance about how to settle on the visual cases, and that's all.
Okay. Mario, you're next, do you want to defer to some of these department reports first?
Yes, yes.
Sometimes it may help.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wrap it up at the end.
Okay, all right, Monique, you have anything for us today?
I do.
That's a good thing.
Mario, you have one of these, or you want?
I have one.
All right, there you go. You don't need to get close to me.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is the mileage rates for the asphalt taxes, and we have the two thousand and nineteen figures, and the twenty twenty, and the proposed twenty twenty one figures. And I don't know if you guys have any question on this, basically, there was a shift in the rate between twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, and it went up to zero point zero eight. And that's what you're using to calculate the property taxes. We have the budgeted figures, and basically, the tax leaving is a little bit more than what was budgeted. And then we have a meeting with the auditors after this meeting, so they're coming in to, basically, you know, have a discussion, have a way, and have their entrance, interviewing stuff, so.
One of the big impacts that's gonna affect our twenty twenty-one budget is gonna be, is the money for the fire department. One of the big impacts that's gonna affect our twenty twenty one budget is gonna be is the money for the fire department. Been allocated for by state funding or state grants. Because that's probably ninety percent of the difference between the five point three two and the eight meals. We went from a non-assessment to a millage rate to fund the fire department. Because there were no houses here to assess.
Well, we're gonna find out that.
Well, I think we know that, don't we? Mario, do you, do you know, didn't the governor? Fund? The fire department money? What, when member?
They they funded them last year, but we don't know if that grant will will push through again for this year. We we still do not know that.
I see that. Oh, I know they're they're still, they 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 expect considerable cuts.
And this is just a preliminary, um, ad blorum. The certified ad blorum will come in on July first.
So the difference in the tax levied in twenty twenty one, is that based on the, what we think new houses are gonna be ready and taxable, or what is that about?
This is the, the property appraiser goes out and, you know, they they look at all the buildings that were built. They add that to to everything. And then they look at, you know, the the cost of. Real estate going up. So I mean, this is an estimate that the property appraiser goes through.
Just an, just an estimate.
Based on six months ago. They did it on January four.
When is the D R four coming? That's the certified insurance. It's gotta come back for August, doesn't it?
Uh, July first.
July first. Okay. All right, so that three fifty three, Monique, on that one prior year. That preliminary figure that you have of three hundred fifty three million dollars, is that, what is that based on? Where did that number come from?
I think this is.
That's the property appraisers.
The property.
Property appraiser. Okay. Just not certified.
Correct. Just not certified.
Just not certified. Okay.
And again, that, keep in mind, everybody's received a notice that this is what your home is being taxed at. It gives everybody that opportunity to go back and say, look, you've got something wrong, or make these adjustments. So again, that's why. This preliminary number and the certified number, there typically isn't a whole lot of difference, but there is the potential for some difference.
Okay. So one of the big. Again, the the biggest dollar amount is to find out if the governor is going to roll that. Initially, it was talked about for two years. But again, the budget had been approved. And I don't know if we're gonna have that by then or not.
And and if we don't, what happens?
But we'll have to decide to go either keep it in the millage rate, or I mean, I don't even see that it's an option to go back to the assessment, because there's no, there's no house. I mean, there's so few homes here.
And if we are considering the assessment approach, we need to look closely at the schedule of deadlines, because we have not been preparing for that approach so far.
No, well, I mean, I I don't even see it personally. I I just, I brought up, that's the, that's the big discrepancy in the five point three two meals to the eight meals. That's why it jumped so high. Okay, well then, uh. By our next meeting, we will have a certified number. And we can start making. What dartboard? We can start throwing the darts. I don't, I don't know if we hit the board, but maybe we can.
For the next meeting, I I hope to bring you a schedule on when we would do workshops, um, for the meetings. And again, just a, just a basic question along those lines. Um, would you like to do them on the same day of the council meeting, where we do the council meeting at nine o'clock and we just roll into a budget workshop at eleven o'clock? Or do you want to do them on a completely separate day? Just as a overall concept.
I'd rather get it over with.
So the same, same day?
Four would be better, but that should be fine. Nine and a half. Same day.
Same day.
Same day.
So what we'll do is we'll set it up on on the council meetings at eleven o'clock or at the conclusion of the council meeting, whichever's first. Or whichever's latest.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Monique. If, do you have any other comments? Okay. Shannon, you got anything?
Nothing of significance to add. I mean, the fact that um, we spent quite a bit of time at the boat camp helping out with the parking. I think those times when we were there with both the counselor, um, Smith and um, the administrator, um, it worked out well. And um, you know, we are happy to continue doing that if technically needed necessarily. We've had a number of medical calls. We've been called to pull people out of the sand on ninety eight a number of times when they've driven it too far. But other than that, nothing significant.
Y'all been doing great over there. Thank you. Jared, you been doing what? Daryl.
What he did? What does he do?
He 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 told, he told me what you were doing. And your grandson.
Thank you.
Especially the grandson.
And and Kathy.
And Kathy. Kathy, anyway, we're talking.
Uh, we, we move on then.
Please.
I don't wanna leave anything too soon. All right. Marty, you got anything for us?
Uh, we're, we're working on the Pope and the Dunes right now. Trying to get that, some statue or something to go along with it from the state.
Okay. No. No kind of, uh, issues in town? I mean, no, no hotspot, no hot? Okay. Good. That's awesome. Yeah, that may take additional personnel.
Let's move on.
Lieutenant, it's a gray truck now.
See, he changed trucks. You notice he's gone incognito on y'all. Okay, I thought I was gonna report his tag number and all that, but I think y'all got it. Okay. All right. Hotspot. Building park. What you got, Gav?
Uh, Kelsey, a new employee, will be starting tomorrow. She's been in our criminal city office training the past week. So she'll go as well today. She'll be here tomorrow. Um, the express lane plans that we got in right before the last meeting, we reviewed those, provided them comments, heard back from them. We expect to have those revised plans on Friday. So that's done. Um, the crossings at Mexico Beach, they've submitted preliminary plans for apartments. So we've looked at those and talked to them preliminarily. We expect them to submit for building permit here shortly. That's really all I got.
Where's the crossing? Is the crossing back on the canal?
The uh.
Same joke.
Oh, yeah, okay. Gotcha.
Are there, Mario, on the gas station? Or have you talked to Mr. Keys? Since we told them that we were gonna preliminary to send the plans in for review, are they gonna be ready to go? Or are they still tied up with the lease, with the landowner? Or do you know?
The the last that I know since they submitted drawings was that things were. People were in agreement, at least at this point. But that was based on the last conversation that I had, which was when they were submitting the drawings, so. The insurance has come through, the landowner, the lease, uh, uh, things are starting to.
Moon stars lined lined up.
Yes, sir.
Have, has that, has any discussion with Miss Bartlett concerning that if the, when, that they are in line to start construction? What, the plans have been approved?
I have not asked.
Haven't asked that? Okay.
We need to stay on top of that.
I agree.
Well, all I know is what Mr. Keys told me. And then Mario talked to him, and it appears that. They're closer to the center of the line anyway. So there was a, there was some discrepancies, not, not a, there was some disputes about that the landowner was not gonna sign the permit. And I think you suggested that even if they have a lease contract. We'll go, we'll go with it.
Yeah. Again, the 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 biggest issue was if the insurance company wasn't providing enough money to rebuild. Once they got through the money side, then the next issue was that the landowner didn't wanna sign on the permit. But the fact that they've got a lease means that the landowner doesn't have to sign on the permit. It's the leaseholder that signs on the permit. So the drawings were submitted with the proper signatures for us to to read.
Awesome. I've done a lot of work for gas stations, paving and stuff like that. Gas stations, when they get ready, they move really fast because they have, have companies that specifically build those things. They're almost always pre-manufactured. So they can move really quickly. And I don't imagine it's gonna be a squabble about which contractor, because they, those are usually pretty easy deals to do.
Well. You're trying to rebuild a city two years of no gas. I can tell you it's a big deal for me.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's not a big deal for them to get going, is what I'm saying. It is a huge deal for us to get going. And I would certainly hope they put non-ethanol gas too, but hopefully.
All right. Uh, Jeannie, you got anything else?
Does her.
Okay. Kathy?
Yes, sir.
There you are. What you got for us today?
Uh, I bet you a new job, and let's hopefully you'll like this one better than the next one.
Well, not everybody just likes it.
Well, it sounds like it's quite a good one, last time.
Oh, it's now the one page?
Yes, sir.
All right. Jared, do you want one?
I, Kathy's gonna give me one.
All right. Justified Means.
I've got paperwork that is involved with insurance dispute. Attorneys are involved.
Did you contact Angela McDonald?
I did.
Where'd you find that?
Told me that there was only one, uh, that she's gonna have demoed, and the rest she's gonna re-rebuild, remodel it.
Good. The third one, the seven oh three Maryland, that is for sale, and whoever buys it. I hope one of my neighbors do bid, be torn out, so. I hope Nick, I hope we do get a little buy in our, whatever we got to do with these. These, send these unclaimed letters back. I mean, I don't, I think we're gonna have to do something. I don't know what we can do. I hope we do. The first two up there, his mother's a lawyer. And he lives in Port St. John, over in Highland, Utah.
Nick, did you say you need posted in the paper if they don't?
You can. And before you go to that stuff, it's even easier. You you can locate either the owner or if it's a business, the manager, you can just hand deliver. Um, there are multiple options under our cover. But the newspaper posting really is the option you go to if you don't even know who you've provided to.
All phrases.
Okay. So this, this list is shorter. The other ones, the, the reason they're not on here, they've been resolved? Okay, so the one, the the uh. Fish House thing has been resolved?
She's demoing. She's contracted with John Arnold.
Okay.
And they're gonna be demoing it.
Okay, great.
The fourth one from the bottom is gone. Chris Stevens. The house had been locked and cleaned up. He. He gave the toilet away and then come in there last weekend, leveled it, and you cut grass now, so.
Okay.
Good. So we're, we're gaining ground.
Oh, yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I don't have that. Is one oh five P forty first Street on there? My name's Kent Posey. I live at one oh five.
One oh five what?
C.
Third Street?
Forty first.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay. Line up one oh five B forty first Street. And that's uh, and obviously quite the issue, I think, for you. Thought to some of you before, or my father's thought to some of you before, got this particular place, but following that essentially, I don't know what the. The protocol is or the code is to get something going so that the gentleman that owns it will actually do something with it. It's been close to two years now, and he's made no effort to do anything. Not even, uh, you know, cleaning up, much less remodel it or make it livable. Um, and it's obviously some mold issues are going on at this time. And you can smell it just right about street, the uh, the other issues.
Kathy, you don't have any comments on that? What what do we know about it?
Well, I just, I did speak to his father yesterday, um, this gentleman back here.
Oh.
Um, and he's got, he showed me where he had done some mold testing. It's pretty gross. Um, but I don't have anything on this person at all.
Do we know who Seesaw Mill LLC is? Do we know that?
I think I found out his, his father told me yesterday, his name is, I think it's Gary Miller or Jonathan Miller.
Jack.
Jack. And he does have another piece of property. I did find that this morning.
Jack Miller? Is that, I hear you right? Jack Miller? From where?
I think he's near Columbus.
I seen that name somewhere.
Yeah, you can probably add several properties here before the storm, and I'm not sure what we've done with with any of them, but. We've attempted to make contact with him multiple times, have spoken to him several times, and then he'll just stop responding, making kind of phone calls for for months at a time. And then, I guess, when it feels like maybe something's about to happen, he'll respond and kind of drag things along. But. Again, he's just obviously looked at the property and tell it, he's made no effort to do anything. Any cleanup that's been done, we've done it, to stop debris from coming on our property, because broken glass comes across into the driveway, broken boards.
How many units are there?
It's three. Remember, the middle unit, he's the.
He's the end, you're in the center?
Yeah.
Nick, what do you do in a townhome situation? Can you help? I mean, what, it's not like a single family home. What, and we can't find them. How do we, what, what, how do we address something like that?
If if you really could not find that individual, that'd be the step where you put it in the newspaper. And when there's no response from the newspaper app, you proceed with your code enforcement action. You can have a hearing with nobody defending it. Um, and the ultimate result of that is gonna be some combination of a lot of fines and, or the city killing and doing the work. On its own to uh. To fix the problem. So if it's a townhouse, it's more complicated.
Yeah.
You're close to another building, it's maybe more costly, but it's all possible.
Kathy, do you, you said you have con, so you have a number slash address for this Mr. Miller?
No, sir, I don't. But I was speaking to his father yesterday.
My father does this.
Okay. Well, then I think we need to start there. And we need to document that we've called him, or attempted to call him. And then, what are we? I mean, he has, if. Yeah, townhouse makes it more difficult.
I mean, there is some stipulation, if I'm correct, that based off of the age of the house, that because it's a connected unit, I mean, he has to do something to to mitigate the damage. It's been our going correct after. I'm not sure we might have policy to update it into state law, policy two thousand and three or something like that.
Mayor, maybe we can, maybe we can all talk after the meeting.
Yeah, let's see if we can gather some information so we we get the best contact information we can, let the city code thing work, give us. See, make sure we try to contact him by by phone and by certified letter. Have we sent him, we, have we, have we probably haven't sent anything yet?
I sent him a letter. Don't do anything.
You, that you, that you had off the property appraisers, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we need to work on that. Let's just see what we can come up with. Thank you. Kathy, do you have any comment? I mean, other, if we don't have questions, or this is just informational?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. I like that we, we, I mean, you can drive around town and see that we're definitely making some progress. It looks like, based on some of these comments, we're gonna do, this list is gonna continue to to join it. All right. Thank you, Kathy. Fun it works.
Morning, pal. All the leaves up there, some papers around, got a list of things to be accomplished in the last couple of weeks. I was over all of those, uh, one thing I will say that, probably noticed that we do have a port of torch, uh, put out now, down, close to where two cans used to be. Uh, Sunset Park, Peter Road, and down on Canal Parkway. Uh, we also installed some pits in front of them or behind them, so people coming down the road, it wouldn't stand out so bad. Uh, we ain't running boats down and, uh, after the storm yesterday, it looked like we done a pretty good job of assisting.
It was a good test.
Yeah, we got those done. Uh, last week, we were able to beach rake, uh, got on the beach, done a little beach raking, so kind of got it cleaned up, we'll do a little more of that for the fort. Chucking our beaches and getting top shadings. Another thing I mentioned, I think I talked to Mario and Mario about, uh, we do have a little piece of the pier in the water out in twenty third Street. Uh, we went out yesterday and looked at that, uh, looks like about a twenty foot piece of the fiberglass island and probably one of the metal braces. Uh, there's no harm of anything on it short right now, but we are in the process. Uh, we will get that out of the water in-house, just like we did the other piece, so, uh, we're working on that now. A little further out than the other one, so we'll have to get a little more cable, uh, so we can get that problem in. Also, at this time, I want to tell Sandy, uh, thank you every morning, Sandy comes in and checks the whole staff, temperature. And I know that may not seem like a lot, but, uh, we do appreciate that, so, uh, thank you Sandy for doing that for us. Other than that, Mayor, what's on the paper there, everybody can look at.
There you go.
We're just doing normal, normal cleaning, cutting, cleaning sidewalks, uh. We did get a crew of the ditches going down on the south side of three eighty sixth, all of Wicked County line. Uh, if you've been down on three eighty six, you'll notice we've done the same thing we did on fifteen Street. We completely cleaned the ditches out all the way down. We had a couple citizens called about wanting to know if we could do that, and, uh, we were able to get that done last week also. Other than that, everything's going to be.
And you got water to all the rest of the slips?
That's, that's right.
Excellent.
Thank you, Tom. Questions for Public Works? All right. Only, only because it's on your list, I had several complaints about fish carcasses in our canal. And you can see that on the last item, that they put those signs and went along on those docks and over there, fish cleaning stations. Kevin, can you help us with any kind, on any of your website, anything that we do not allow fish carcass, do not put your, we have a wonderful boat, I mean, a fish cleaning facility. A cooler where they can put them, and if they can't come around there, that is something that code, police. Council members, public, if you see that happening from a private fish cleaning, we need to report that. We cannot tolerate that. It is, we, we fought that battle too hard and, and won it, and now because of different thing, I mean, it's, it's just laziness. If they can't take them around here and put them in that cooler. So, uh, other people in our canal that use it do not deserve the smell and see that stuff in our, our canal, so. I encourage anyone that sees any activities of fish carcasses being thrown in the canal, please call someone. Yes?
Mayor, we did put up, uh, a flyer on every one of the private fish cleaning stations throughout the canal.
Good.
Also, so every, they have something up there, you know, they not for the canal.
All right. Mario, you're up.
Mayor, if I could get Thomas to give a quick update on the data system?
Josh, I'm gonna come back to you, I'm sorry, just.
The data?
Skate.
Skate.
Yes, sir, um, everybody knows that we upgraded our location after the hurricane with a new, with our skate system, perimeter control, which we did not have prior to the storm. We was running, I hope somebody seen a light previous to the storm. Nowadays, we actually come online yesterday, I was sitting at my house last night when that storm blew through here, we got an alarm over forty fourth Street. I was able to look at it on my phone in real time and see exactly what the issue was, and nobody on forty fourth Street even knew there was a problem, so I was able, alarm every same day, everything. I knew what the problem was before I even got here, and know whether it was a false start, some simple major, whatever. That system is up and running on all stations, but two right now, so we got two of them that have line power too. The skating people that came in yesterday, we are up and running a hundred percent on that new system, so. Hopefully the nights of hearing the alarm over seventh Street, that area, all that's hoping to be happening, so.
Great.
That's Eric.
Oh. Music? Yeah, music. We've, we had a CDBG meeting just the other day where the TDC from Panama City. And along with Mexico Beach is gonna push forward, um, the pier project, so we've, we've got energy coming from them for that particular enterprise.
I see energy.
Which is a huge help to us. It is one of the things that I, I would like to see if y'all would like for us to go out for a RFQ for the city pier. Again, within the contract that we have with Dewberry, we can contract with them to continue and do the city pier. But city piers are pretty specialized, so if you would like for us to go out for a separate RFQ.
We did that.
For the pier, okay?
That's real dollars, it's late.
That was in two thousand seventeen. Do we want to continue on with that to get, push them forward on, on the next step? Basic question.
Can I just say one thing on that?
Certainly.
So, the piers should be eligible for FEMA funding for design as well as the construction. Um, I doubt that FEMA will let us use the contract or when we put it out for RFQ prior to the storm. So, if we're going to use them, I think you still have to go through that RFQ process to make it FEMA eligible.
Of course.
Yeah.
It is, it is a very specialized type of work.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
And, uh, again, right now, one of the things that we're working on is separating out the design from the construction. So that we can start getting those monies fed in prior to the, the full-fledged, so if.
Are you saying you think they will require? Can we ask them? Or is it just, is it just assumed that after the storm, they want everything to be done? Well, then I think we should put out an RFQ. I think that the council and the cities, we need, uh, we need to do that.
Okay. Um, the next project that, again, we can either do an RFQ or continue on with, uh, with Dewberry is the jetty. And again, on the jetty side, there, uh, the consultant that is being used for beach re-nourishment is somebody that is under contract within Dewberry. Which would benefit the design to tie the beach re-nourishment with the jetty because it's that, it's similar technology. So again, go for a total RFQ or ride under?
For what now?
For the jetty. Remember, one of.
The east side?
One of the projects that we're going after is a, is a jetty at, at the canal.
Okay.
And that's approximately a five million dollar project, rough order magnitude. So RFQ that or work with the master service agreement with, uh, with Dewberry. And I think Dewberry already works with the consultant that does the beach re-nourishment, is that correct, Ray? So there they do have.
In Virginia.
My gasket, I mean, uh.
Nebraska.
Yeah. Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Whatever council thinks, what, uh. I know they have extensive knowledge of our beach re-nourishment from the past, but, uh, I would whatever.
I say we carry it on.
Carry it on.
To keep it tied in.
So I'll get a task order from them and bring it.
Was there anybody else, is there any objection to that?
Who are you saying go with who?
Again, on, on, on the, on the jetty, the consultant that they use for the jetties is the same consultant that is used for beach re-nourishment. And the beach re-nourishment knowledge that they have for the Bay County area is gonna make them probably the most qualified, so. Again, we can go for an RFQ, which basically tells us who's the most qualified.
There's so few of them.
I, I think we need to try, I think we need to go for RFQ, I do, in my opinion, I think, I think a little spice in the life or something different might go a long way. That's my opinion, though.
I'm for staying with what we have.
What does beach re-nourishment mean?
Beach re-nourishment is when, um, you go out and you do a study of how much sand we have on our beach. And that knowledge comes back and allows us to qualify for Corps of Engineers funds to basically go out and dredge sand from. Someplace a mile or two or three miles offshore and pump it onto the beach. Uh, and beach re-nourishment is one of those things that has been done successfully in Panama City Beach and unincorporated Bay County. I don't know that y'all have had a beach re-nourishment project.
We never have, yeah.
But it's one of those things that, again, right now, you have one mile of critical beach, you have two more miles that we're trying to get qualified. And it's mainly the TDC that does this effort because two of their pennies from the Tourist Development Council goes into the funds that are used to match with the Corps of Engineers, so. It's very convoluted, but that common knowledge of knowing where the borrow areas are, knowing who the local contractors, knowing how our beach rides back and forth and goes offshore. There is, there is some benefit to having that common knowledge in the area.
So, just to interject, the CDC is currently developing a shovel-ready project, which will cost twenty-five million dollars. That will ner, re-nour, our whole three and a half mile beaches. We, under the umbrella, have utilized MRD through Dewberry. We have this, the MRD has already designed this, we've already found our borrowed area sites. And we are now moving into getting permit in hand, so, you know, when we find this twenty-five million dollars, it's just easily to find, we can put shovels in the ground. We have utilized MRD with our other stuff through Dewberry with beach nourishment. And, I mean, I'm just, Mike just, he knows this information, and I don't think we'll find anyone outside of MRD that does something like this better, especially for our coastline.
And just, forgetting, just last week, I had a two-hour-long meeting with the Corps of Engineers where they are doing a study on beach re-nourishment for our area, so. It is something that has good energy because of the storm, uh, for our region. And we did forward the information that we have as Mexico Beach over to the Corps, so that they can plug that into their feasibility study.
Okay. All right, so the question remains, is council, do we need some general consensus to either RFQ this project or stay in the queue we're in? So we can move forward? I think Bobby's voice, stay, I'm okay with staying, Jerry's not okay with staying, I'm not.
Do we already have a preliminary estimate cost of construction, you know, back to that two million dollars, under two million dollars special?
I think we've estimated for the, for the jetty, not the beach nourishment.
Right.
I think beach nourishment was estimated, what, twenty-five million to the whole beach?
Well, it sounds like that's not even likely to be a city contract.
And then the west or east jetty, I think we've estimated between three to five, if we expand the jetty.
Do you happen to know if that was one of the projects we listed on the contract two years ago that?
Well, it wasn't listed specifically, but that would be hurricane Michael related. Because it was damaged.
And can you kind of briefly tell us what the jetty's gonna look like? What does that entail? Is it going out a mile, a half mile, quarter mile?
So, that, I, what we proposed was, you know, the portion of the city on the west side that was so damaged by the surge. Where on the south side, ninety, almost all of the houses were obliterated. We have discussed bringing the jetty, the east side, further towards the pier. How far we go, I, it hasn't been decided, but the suggestion would bring it quite a bit further, closer to the pier, wrap it around and bring it around to create a breakwater in the future. But also, that kind of ties into the beach re-nourishment, because if you have the east side wrapped around, that prevents our sediment from landing back at the inlet to the marina. And starts to build up the sand on that, behind the jetty on that side, so it's kind of a separate piece. So, yeah, that's, that's what we've discussed in two thousand seventeen. I know Dewberry and MRD did a feasibility study to look at the east jetty to figure out how to, um, kind of come up with ideas for a solution for that problem. And that was one of the things that they said would help would be to lengthen the jetty, um, in combination with beach nourishment.
So it's, it's essentially, it's gonna catch sand all on its west side?
On it, on its east side. Yes, on the east side. So our west jetty is, is longer than the east, and sand is caught behind it. So the idea would be on the east side to lengthen that as well, so that you have the two jetties are even, so you don't have one longer than the other, which lets sand paddle against it and fall into the inlet.
Well, used to, when we would dredge, but now we would dredge a big hole on the west side of the jetty. Because that would fill up, and that kept it from spilling around.
Exactly.
Um, so, what I'm saying is, is that the west side is actually gonna catch sand, it's gotta, it's gonna catch sand all the way along before it spills around. It's only gonna spill around at the end.
Yeah.
And if it's in a greater depth, that doesn't, it's not as big an issue, I'm assuming.
Yes, but I think it also depends on the direction of the winds, so we have, uh, wind coming from the east, what happens is if this is the west jetty, our east jetty is shorter. So you have that sand hitting our west jetty and then depositing at the inlet. So this study looked at lengthening the east jetty and addressing that side too, so that we don't have one longer than the other. In terms of how far it extends, well, when we say lengthening it, we're saying bringing it back around, kind of even with the, um, west edge.
Parallel.
Parallel to the beach, thank you.
The east jetty.
Keep in mind, we really need to hire the consultant because we're, we're Monday night.
Yeah.
Forecasting one, we haven't even had the game yet, so.
Yeah. I didn't even know we had an east jetty, I've never seen it. It's sand, yeah.
It is one of the projects that we're going.
Uh, coming back, are we, do we have any more? Questions slash comments slash, trying to just get a consensus, I don't think we need a motion, we just need to know if there's, do we? We're trying to decide on a RFQ versus staying where we are for, to move forward on beach, beach re-nourishment.
I'm for staying where we are, first.
I, I understand what Jerry's saying, and I agree, we need to start looking at different things, but this is already in process. So we can go ahead and get it going, with people that are already involved in doing it. So I'm for doing it, stay with it.
Sharon, you have an?
I think we ought to stay with what we've got, and, uh.
All right, Mario, that ought to give you some direction.
Yes, sir, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, and that pretty much wraps it up for me.
Joshua Dewberry, you got some comments for us?
Yes, sir. Um, just run through the projects real quick that we have. Uh, Sunset Park, we'll finish the coastal construction control line certainly this week. Next step, I'll be working with the architect on a layout and actually initiating that coastal construction control line, I'm already through D and B.
Before you move from that, now where do we, where do we stand with design of Sunset Park? What is, what are we, are we ready to? Is that ball still rolling?
We, we have the engineers under contract to do the design work, which sets certain lines and certain heights. At our next meeting, I will have a contract for you for DAG to do the design for the, the actual park itself, so. That's my next step, but we had to set those lines and those elevations before the architect can start to figure out whether he was slab on grade elevated slab or so on, so, for the next meeting.
Um, citywide streets, uh, we have a base drawing based on the DED that's about seventy-five percent complete that identifies the areas that were damaged. Um, we're going through that D and D right now, making sure the quantities are correct and, and the core funds, the drawings. The next step on that will be, and I spoke briefly about it in the last meeting, is the way that that was allotted through FEMA. There were parts of some roadways where there was a five-by-five area that was cut out, and that's all that was given as part of that road. So what I would like to do is, once we have that base drawn ready and are able to look at it, is bring it before Mario, potentially a workshop to look at it. I think that we would be better served, and I was talking with Diego some about this, about taking those quantities, combining those quantities and looking at the four streets that need. that need to be resurfaced the most instead of just having small patch areas on some roads that are otherwise fine. But just getting a general consensus of the group moving forward, we can, it's my understanding that we can use those quantities however we want to. But I think we'll be better served to try to put those towards a full street resurfacing rather than just a few cutting patches on particular streets and then large quantities on others. Kind of working on the same thing with the citywide port and sidewalk. We're working on a base drawing and did it right now as well. Working through those D and D quantities and should have something through some preliminary to take a look at as well. Other issue is Thomas, who met me on Friday about the issue with the auto valve or field valve. Got that information from him back at the office. And one of our engineers is taking a look at that information. We will be following up with Thomas this week on meeting and seeing if we can work with the maintenance back and with the contractor to troubleshoot the issue that's been going on with that valve.
Same valve?
Field valve.
Same valve that we talked about six months ago?
It'll work today and quit tomorrow. So we made it to field, I think, every day, just to keep the rest from being overflowed or not. One day, like I said, over from file, computer system, everything works perfect. We come out the next day, can't get any none. So we're finally even believing something will be affecting the valve itself when we get back.
All right. What else you got, Josh? Any questions, Jim? Any questions for Dewberry?
I, I'd like to get something black and white, what you're doing, if you don't mind, at the next meeting. Just for me, just to tell us, like everybody else, give us a little literature so that we can keep up with it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are, council comments?
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Here we go.
There we go.
Here we go.
The dunes, people walking on them. I was watching Sunset the other day. A gentleman comes walking right across the dunes. His wife came up the ramp. I said, "Sir, please do not walk out on the dunes." He said, "I've been told that three times today. I didn't listen to them, I'm not gonna listen to you." And he used a few more words I'm not gonna use during the meeting. Walk control, according to the sheriff, we do not have ordinance for walking on the dunes. Is there any law or do we need a resolution or ordinance to keep people from walking on the dunes?
All right, so the issue is, under state laws, there are one or two statutes that if you interpret them very aggressively could be helped with. We can adopt something on a local level that says they have the dunes, greatly other rules says they have the dunes. We also need to think through though, what do we want the penalty to be? How do we want that enforcement to go? Because in general, with our local laws, we run everything through code enforcement. And that's, might not, might not be a good fit if you're intending to do something quick and simple. What, what, what would be the type of solution you would like? And then we can explore what to do for it.
Well, number one, if we go through the ordinance, the summer will be over before the ordinance gets passed. Right?
Just about.
So we're not doing anything.
So we've been looking at this over the last twelve, eighteen hours. I was reading some emails from Bay County attorneys today. They're suggesting, hey, talk to our consultant, we're not sure, they haven't had problems according to them. I was reading statute that it's really geared more towards construction activities and driving. But if you wanna be very aggressive on it, you could probably do misdemeanor charges on people who are damaging vegetation. I don't know if that's what we want. I don't know if the state attorney would prosecute that. We're, we're looking into options, but we don't have an answer yet.
You ain't told me anything.
I use the law.
Well, we don't have a way, we've looked at that when, when we first did them after Opel, about the dunes, we just, we just expect people to be more courteous than what you encountered.
Well, it's not just me. I've had, you know, there's areas around, you can look, you drive down the beach and look where people have been doing it compared to where they hadn't been doing it.
Bobby, this is what I'm asking is, would you like them to have a criminal problem? Would you like them to have a twenty-dollar fine? What, what, what outcome do you think is appropriate?
Well, somebody like this person here, he's not gonna stand anything himself, some type of fine. If it gets to a point where people realize that they gonna be a fine, they might, may not do it. I mean, if, if people walk across the dunes, go down in front of the ramp and put a tent up, you know, it's just, they don't care.
So the, the other alternative, I don't know that's been explored very well yet with our enforcement officers, but our dunes are not normal dunes with normal rules about protecting dunes. Our dunes are a construction project that was completed recently. So we're really talking about damage to a recently constructed city project. And we may be able to approach things differently due to that, depending on what our partners in the law enforcement realm say works for them. But we also probably need to let the world know what's coming on before we start trying to have aggressive arrests of people with their sand buckets.
Lieutenant, how much problem y'all been having about it?
We try to deal with it as much as we can, but we're not always there. And like, we've been asking people to let us know whenever they see these people so we can address it with them. You know, citizens have been good about, you know, trying to let them know and everything. But yeah, they catch flack from these people and everything else because they don't listen to them. But talk to them, you know, give us a call that, you know, you don't have a good experience with them or whatever. We can kind of work it through and everything else. But like he's saying, everything with the statutes with Florida and everything, you basically got two realms up there. You've got, you can't ride in the dune. And you can't harvest seeds. So not really anything to go with foot traffic other than, you know, them, you know, bring a football team there and take it out of ten-foot swathes. Because places all up and down is beach and everything else. There are places that go through the dunes, you go down to the beach and everything else. And that's been customarily used and everything else. Sand dunes that come through here, some of the places that were customarily used before are not there. And you also got houses that go out right across the dunes and everything too. Some of the dunes come through their house that there wasn't, there was access there before. It's, it's something we're gonna have to work through. And, you know, like I said, if you wanna get an ordinance, you know, put some teeth on it, you know, what kind of teeth do you wanna fight with? What's the enforcement, is it a arrestable offense? Is it a fine? It's something we're gonna have to work through. But we're trying to, I'm, I'm thinking maybe, you know, we go up with some stakes or something and put some ropes in between the things to start off with, in between the crosswalks and stuff. Maybe, you know, visual aid for them and everything, but, you know, nothing's a fix right now.
Well, this guy walked right by a sign and wasn't like a rope would've done anything anyway.
Yes.
What y'all, am I the only ones worried about this?
No, I just complain a lot of them. But I don't, there's no bite into it. I thought Mr. Williams, I mean, I thought they can't do nothing. Till we, till the council, I reckon, does something for them. What can we do?
I think for me, the only thing we can do is be more aggressive than just a sign. Is two by fours and a... Make it, I mean, they'd have to just be blatantly wanting to do it. And, and if that is the case, we can't stop all of those, but we may help. If you put something up there, the enforcement, to me, is, I mean, they're just not gonna be, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna see them do it all the time. And I think that we can, the signs are nice and they don't, but I, I think the easiest thing to do to get our point across from the city that we don't wanna walk in there is to put something up there, make them walk under it, make them tear it down, and then, then, then we may do something.
Or the wind fence?
Oh, no, I wouldn't think of a fence. I was thinking of some.
You know, I'm supposed to be building a dune up, little, what do you call that?
Sand fence.
Sand fence? No, I'm thinking of between the crosswalks of some two by fours or posts with, with...
Continuous rope.
Just, just a rope or a, or something, I mean, you know, I mean, that's a, no, no, no barricade.
Okay.
Well, a sand fence is something they couldn't step across. And it, and it would serve the purpose of holding the sand.
It's also very expensive to run a sand fence the length of that beach.
So usually they just put a post?
I'm saying between the, between there, you could put six or eight posts or whatever. Whatever it takes to put, not a cable, but a, a something, and I'm not, I'm not sure about a rope. With that kind of rope, like a rope may go missing. I don't know. I'm, I'm trying to, I don't know.
In, in Panama City Beach, when they did the beach renourishment and then afterwards, that they did the, the planning of the sea oats, they do have a fence on the seaward side that runs the full length. Now, they did that in two thousand and eight or nine or whenever that was. And about seven, eight years later, that rope eventually degrades in, in the soft air and sunlight. So it's somewhat disappearing. But again, it encourages people not to walk across, but it is not a foolproof barrier.
Well, that was my thought, was that the rope served as, as a... Somebody said, "Well, I didn't see the sign." "Oh, I do see that down there." You got a rope, it's, it directs people. And it's better than what we have.
We could put that rope closer to the right of way instead of it being further down at the base of the dune. Again, just ideas in, in the placement of that rope. So on, on the seaward side, we do have, we do have sand fence on the seaward side. It sits at a forty-five degree angle so you can walk around it. But again, it's implying not to walk through it, but...
I think it oughta be down by the base of the dune because they can walk down that.
You're talking about the whole beach or just eight, three, six?
That's where your main problem is. That's where, I think that's where the majority of the problem is personally, from what I've seen. I, I've seen activity in, in some of the streets, but if you, most of the streets open right to the beach, there's a, there's a cut through.
You know, a point to look at it, you look in between Al Governor and Sunset Park, it's beautiful in there. It, it, it's really grown good and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because nobody go that far with it. Everybody goes Sunset Park, goes straight down and look at it.
But I would think several spurs, you know, you rope ropes three hundred feet, get several spurs of rope and probably five hundred dollars, we could, we, we could make a, we could do the dedicated beach.
Well, I'm willing to try that, start with it. And then if it don't, then we may have to go to the stronger management.
We'll see.
What, can, this kind of has something to do with that. How, how are we looking with DOT doing the landscape deal? As a humorous fix to it, you know, when there was a lot of sand spurs growing down through there, nobody wanted to walk through it. You know?
We can specify some.
Yeah, we could plant some, plant some prickly pear cactus.
There you go. That's better than that, mate.
Oh, you know, and I, and I'm sure I'm gonna be known as the sand spur king from this point on. But actually, when the vegetation was there, no one walked through it.
Well, they had their own little, they had their own little.
They were afraid of sand spurs whether they were there or not, you know, people. Anyhow, I'm just saying, do we have an idea?
Yeah, well, the landscape plan, according to Ms. Moss, I'll talk tomorrow about this, that, that we're gonna have to do some more work on that. They're not gonna let us, going to turn it in. They're not gonna do that.
Right, okay. So that's still down the road.
But that's still down the road. Yeah, but that won't affect, that won't, the landscaping, excuse me, won't affect. I, I think we oughta try something, Bobby. I'm not, I, I mean, you know, I don't think caution, that police caution tape would last very long in terms of, but something, a rope. I think the dunes are worth five, six hundred bucks to try to, to, I mean, I think that's...
I'm willing to go back and start with it and, you know, we'll see how it does. There are some people that, it won't matter what happens. But it might be a more deterrent than...
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm willing to try that.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, just on the dedicated beach?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, like I say, the most visible signs of people misusing that or not. Body is in, I haven't seen...
It's essentially Eighth Street to the...
Eighth Street to the county line, yes.
Well, you know, in the roads, people got a path, go straight down, so they use that.
That's right.
And we do have, have thousands, we're not, can't worry about that right now.
All right, let's try the dedicated beach and just give it a shot, see what happens.
One of the other things, I have a question too about the crossing the sand. Some of the crosswalks are going to the top of a dune? I guess we're just walking down the other side of the dune?
Right.
Okay. And that's, there's not gonna be a walkway on the other side? I guess you can't put one over there anyhow, right? Okay.
We'll, we'll delineate the path with the post and rope what we have on the...
Yeah, okay.
What else you got, Bob?
That's got it.
Jerry, you got anything?
Yeah, I wanna just tell everybody we've, about the boat ramp and then, Kev did a really good job. My grandson, I furnished a golf cart. We showed people back four for four days. Kev the only one to get tipped, I didn't get no tips. Didn't give me nothing. I had no, no comments from you. But it, it really went well. We parked over a hundred something car, made a lot of money. And the boat slipped, we, we rented just about all of them, I think. Don Lee told me we did, so we did make a little money out of that ordeal. I would like to get Mario on, I've heard a lot in the city about the IT people. I hope you're working on that ordeal, so hot and heavy because me and I are the only two that can work without a computer. Rest of them need it. So I, I think that's a top priority for you. Hope you jump on that pretty good.
Would you, would you repeat that?
I love the dead one. They put that pick in its finger for Carol, didn't they?
I know, I was driving the shit, I'm like crazy, I'm sorry. Did you say IC-T people? What did you say?
I-T.
I-T.
Hell, you get with the program now.
I know it. Well, you wore me out today.
I know I have, that's what I come for.
The bad though, you got a smile, man.
Well, I mean, the, hell, a lot of people with the I-T.
I-T is definitely not the strong suit.
No, I think what we got's not working, so I think we need to find something. And I hope you get to IC-T problem fix. And, but I would like to thank, thank all our people that, for the city, they're doing a good job. Getting all fish carcass picked up, little amount of things that we, uh... I'm smiling at people in the office, they're doing a good job. Lizzy, everybody else, doing a good job. And I just say thank you, that's all. That's it.
I agree. Yeah, the boat, the opening of staff season was, it was truly an eye-opening experience to see the way we, we did a great job down there. And I had people, I didn't do anything, I won't clarify that wrong fact. I went down there, gave more support, and I had three people thanking me. And I started, I, I mean, they were very, the people there liked to see government out of our environment, down, helping. It, it was, it was truly remarkable to watch that, so...
The fire department was the, is the main, was the main key to the boat ramp part.
That has never happened.
No, so...
And also, I thought it was very cool that Saint Joe came over here, Bridget Preside showed up at Jerry's request. She came over on that Saturday morning to see firsthand what it looked like. firsthand what it looked like, and I think maybe, uh, we, she realizes how important it is to get that other property cleared, or for, for us to get it in our agreement to, to use. And that's all I have, fish carcasses. Gotta stay on the fish carcass, people, and I'll tell you, I'll, my phone, burn me up. Bye. What else you got, Jerry?
I'm good.
Jerry?
I'm good.
You're good? Last call, public comment?
We have a brand-new weather station at the end of Canal Street, uh, thanks to Bay County, and a little bit of coordination. Sandy called me the other day and said they're getting ready to put a weather station here. And when we found out that there was a live camera feed that was going on that weather station, we put them in a little bit better location, so that view will be looking down the canal towards the jetty, and it will have rain gauge, wind speed, barometric pressure, um, once we get that, it, it, you have to get to it through an app. Once we get all that information on how to get the app, uh, we'll share it with everyone, we'll put it on our website. But it is really a, a neat little thing that, that we now have access to.
Hell, I ain't found it yet. I go by and look at it. Get an IT. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Motion for a judge.
Don't move.
David, good to see you.